Okay, we'll do road call.
Uh, Mayor Rader is not present. Brandon Carrico.
Here.
Danny Clark, not here. Mark Mcatee.
Present.
Dana Strange.
Here.
Attorney Stephen Timberball.
Present.
And Mike Ingleman.
Present.
And Clerk Treasurer Lori Carrico is present.
Everybody should have a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting, January thirteenth. Have a chance to look it over, see any visual corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes. So make a motion. You can say it.
I'll say it.
All in favor? New business. Police Department Canine Drug Detection gets replaced. Will that, should you kind of address that?
Yes, sir. So, um, last March, uh, I brought it up to the Ford Works in the Council to let them know that we were gifted a $5,000 canine. Uh, it's a puppy, still is a puppy, doesn't turn one until March, that's all. So, obviously, now he's growing it more into, you know, the obedience and all that. So, my other canine, she is not drug detection or anything. The only thing she is is apprehension. She'll, you know, run you down, let's just say that.
Yeah, I know that.
But, but, huh?
I know that.
Yeah, but, but the, uh, yeah, yeah, you, but the, uh, the puppy, I would like to make him not anything but other a drug dog, even though it is a German Shepherd, we don't, or, and I may work on tracking with him. We don't need another apprehension dog, right? So, the county only has one dog now. They used to, almost every officer used to have, well, not every officer, but a lot of the officers had dogs, but now it's, it's flown down to one. And actually, that dog, which is Major Reed's dog, is going to retire, I think, in May, sometime this spring, early summer. So consequently, that's not going to give us any, any type of free sniff of the air with the dog, right? If we have a traffic stop suspect something, then if the individual won't let us into the vehicle or let us have access, then we don't have any other courses of action without any other probable cause. So, this, like I said, this dog was gifted to us. It's, it's a full brother to my female, so it comes from the same kennel. They give it to, they gave it to us not because of, you know, we're special or anything like that. It's, uh, the owner of the kennel, um, he's also a canine handler in Wabash. He sold it to an elderly gentleman. The elderly gentleman didn't realize the care it takes and the activity that a German Shepherd has opposed to like a Yorkie or something, right? He wanted his companion animal because the gentleman was sick at the time. I, he is now, since passed. However, um, he wanted it, the owner of the kennel wanted to give it back to him and, or, uh, pay him for, you know, just giving back his money. The, the gentleman refused. He said, no, he says, my dying wish is you either give it to a veteran or a police department. Well, fortunately, you know, uh, we were blessed because the owner of that kennel thought of us and called me up, says, hey, you want this, want this puppy? So, my son and I, we went up to Wabash, picked the dog up and brought it back. So, it's, obviously, it's an out, it threw it from an outstanding lineage, right, of, of blood? So, there, we need to get this, since the dog was free, right? The training will essentially be free because it's, it's volunteer, the people, it's, Andy Burkhart's one is going to help us train, Jason and that. So, they're going to be, if the training is essentially free. So, um, you know, and I've been boarding it, you know, I mean, it's, you know, it belongs not really to me. Essentially, it belongs to the department in a way because that's what the dying gentleman's wishes was. So, um, the vet care is taken care of by Wallace, you know, Doc Wallace. So, the only thing we need is the training aids, right? I'm going to essentially do all the training with, you know, with certified handlers, Andy Burkhart, et cetera. So, this is a win-win. What we need is $1,000 to get this synthetic drug detection kit. It has methamphetamine, marijuana, uh, fentanyl, cocaine and various others. So, and what it is, is synthetic. So, I'm actually going to get, go through the DEA to get the actual live narcotics, but that's, that's a bureaucracy nightmare in and of itself. And as Mark can tell you, that, uh, you know, you have to take such good accountability of it. You know, you have to weigh it every time you take it out, uh, weigh it when you get back because it's real, right? You have to log it, you have to have a chain of custody every time you use this DEA drugs. The only time it'll prob, that DEA, it is free, the DEA is. The only time that would probably leave the, leave the evidence room is to essentially ensure that the dog can actually get real stuff, right? Opposed the synthetic, which is supposed to be identical. Synthetic, there's no risk to it, so if you would touch the fentanyl that, you know, the bag that it comes in, it won't do anything to you, right? We won't have to narc any or anything like that. There's no, since it's synthetic, there is no accountability. You just buy it, it comes in a, in a cellophane pouch, airtight pouch, and then you put it in a little container and then do your, do your training with it. So, it is quite expensive, however, it lasts roughly one and a half to two years. And that's dependent upon how often you use it, right? So, with one dog within the confines of the police department, it may last longer than that. You know, it does need to be refrigerated, which we have a refrigerator, so. But the good thing is it doesn't need to be inside an evidence, right? And we don't have all the accountability and send the paperwork to DEA and I lost a gram or something, now, you know, we get swooped down on, so.
So, it's $1,000 is what you're requesting?
Yes, sir. And that's all, pending any questions, that's really all I have.
Who's going to be the handler? Can any of the officers handle him or?
Right now, I am.
One person, though?
Yeah, yeah. So, right now, I am, that doesn't mean we can't turn them over to an officer, right? Another officer, so.
Do you have to be certified to handling too?
No, just a dog, right? Well, in fact, by Indiana State law, dogs, uh, canine dogs do not even have to be certified. The only reason why they're certified, a lot of departments do the certification, is because of court purposes, right? And so, that's, that's. But they do not have to be like, oh, he's certified, so, uh, you know, here's a certification number. But, but for court purposes, it's, it's good to have, right? So, and I can get, get him certified, so Andy's a certifier, so.
Any other questions or discussion?
So, you're not going to need another kit after two years? Because the dog would already be trained, or are you going to continue to train every year?
Yeah, you have to continue to train, yeah. In fact, uh, I don't do it, um, even though I, I do in fact have two canines. Canine handlers, uh, um, by law, they have to have, or employment law, they have to have, they're authorized 30 minutes per day to train their dog and feed their dog and all that groom and all that stuff. But yes, you have to continually train that dog, yeah.
Work for the government, the government canine handlers train their, every day?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, at least once a week, you need to run, run the dog through the, you know, the, whatever course that you set up. It can be varied, right? Just, uh, so they, they hit on that each particular drug, so to speak.
So, in the future, when, when we start looking at like the capital investment plan for five or 10 or years out, 20 years out, that will be one of those things on there, right?
In terms of?
In two years for any other kit?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. Yeah. And a dog, the, an actual dog is good for about eight years and then they have to retire. Not that they're going to die, but it's just they lose that drive, so. Not all of them, but, you know, like a Malinois, they're schizoids. Anything else? Good, correct questions, actually.
Does anybody want to make a motion to do this?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
About the, uh, sort of the kid, it was the canine kid.
Dana made a motion and Mark made a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Repairs to water treatment plant high service pump, I guess Bo would speak to that.
Yeah, we had a bearing failure in one of forty horse electric motors on the high service pump for water treatment plant. And at the same time, I asked the lane to pull the pump as well. It'd been over twenty years since it's been looked at. They didn't find anything critical wrong with it. However, there's sewer, which is typical when it runs ten, twelve hours a day. It's been over twenty years, so that it had been looked at. So, their estimate to repair, reinstall pump and motor is $16,370. That was after motor repairs and there's some machine work that needs to be done. New ceramic seal on the pump.
How much is a mid pump?
Pardon me?
How much is a mid pump?
I didn't even want to ask. Very expensive.
Very expensive. It's cheaper to repair the old one. Because it looks like to me, what I read here, you just pretty well getting the frame out of that.
Yes.
That's about it.
This has come out of sewer water, I suppose?
Water.
Water?
Yes.
That's what brings the water to town.
People want water.
Any other questions or?
I'm sure you're going to have it, so. I'll make the motion. And I would, at that, with that same, on that same note, I'd recommend probably first of the year, next year, have the high service pump one pulled for the same reason. Hopefully, not the same reason, but preventive maintenance. If this one's shown that kind of where, they were both pulled in twenty, 2002, believe?
It's twenty fifth year, between 2000 and 2002, they were both pulled inspected before we had the project. And so, yeah, it's a lot of hours, a lot of, a lot of water going through the channel there. So, I would strongly encourage you to have pump one inspected next year.
You're over in the beginning of the year?
Yes. It's kind of a slow time and they're looking for work indoors.
Okay, Brandon's made a motion, and I want to second it.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Bo.
So, Bo, is there any chance of obsolescence with these pumps? Or is it, you're going to be twenty years from now, we'll still be good with the pumps? We just got to keep on rebuilding when they need to be rebuilt?
At some point, they'll probably have to look at replacing the impeller. And then, again, just the impeller alone is pretty expensive.
And the parts are still pretty, really available?
Okay. What, the rest of this is wear items, wearings and collars.
Okay.
Okay, next up is our utility adjustments. You should have a copy of those in front of you there. Looks like Bo was signed off, they're all legit. Any questions on the utility adjustments? Do I ask for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve that adjustments.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Department reports. Well, you're up, unless we go first.
Uh, service calls seventy-eight, one hundred and seventy-six line locates. We sold 6.9 million gallons to Davis County Rural Water. We produced 16.1 million gallons, an average of 519,000 gallons per day. Waste water treatment plant, nineteen point one million gallons, six hundred and eighteen thousand gallons a day average. Plant was at sixty-two percent capacity.
Thank you. You know, and that's on me, uh, I didn't receive that, uh, it is on me. There's, uh, no excuse, I'm, so Mandy usually gives it to me for a meeting and, uh, so I did not get the actual report. So, like I say, that's, that's on my shoulders, so I apologize.
Do you know if they've been busy chief at all?
I'm sorry?
Just normal stuff or?
Normal, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Terry?
For January, we had thirty-four total runs. Twenty-one of those were medicals and thirteen were fire related. That's it.
Okay. Any other essential business?
I've got one. Property at 107 West Washington Street. Um, I'm trying to talk to you about, say, I've been dealing with it since October. It's a bunch of trash junk and, uh, the property owner paid the fine last time and then we gave him thirty days, goes to an eviction. Time has went by, like I said, it's been since October. So, at this point, we're at the pace where we got to just clean up ourselves. I do have a couple quotes out, I haven't gotten back yet, but I'm glad and ask permission to, once I get the quotes, to go with the cheapest one and get that property cleaned up.
Be aware that he's going to have to pay for that.
Yes, so the process is we'll bill him for thirty days to pay it. If he doesn't, we put a lien on the property.
Why don't we just clean it up?
I don't know, I can't answer for a lot of people, I mean, I don't know.
Um, I'll, I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
No other essential business, I ask for a motion to adjourn the board works meeting?
Make a motion.
Second. Favor? As I switch room, we'll go right into the city council area.
Same game.
Same guy. I talked to Jesse, what'd you find out, anything?
I don't know. I about passed along and they know.
Nope. Tell the public what.
So, yeah, they're, it's, it's, it was, I don't know.
Looks like your advice here, we'll go ahead and do a fuller order. Road call. Pledge.
To the fight of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Rader is not here. Mike Ingleman?
Here.
Charles Rayhill?
Here.
Mark Mcatee?
Present.
Jeremy Holland?
Here.
Dave Smith?
Here.
Attorney Stephen Timberball?
Present.
Clerk Treasurer Lori Carrico.
You should have a copy of the, uh, previous meeting, meeting minutes of January thirteenth and the twenty-seventh. Have a chance to review them, and there's no modifications to those minutes. I'm in a pain of motion to accept as presented.
You got any responses yet, Bo, on, uh, new hire, you would want to do for the street department?
Not really, no. Mayor and I hadn't had much opportunity to talk about it. We've got someone in mind, someone interested in term.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everybody should have a copy of the claims, anyone sent via email. Here's a hard copy. Any questions on the claims?
Mike, I don't know, Brian, H O G B called me this morning. There's, uh, sixty thousand that needs to be paid. Want to go ahead and do the wiring on the green space down there?
Yeah.
You know anything about it?
No, it would come out of the already appropriated funds, I guess, for that.
Well, I guess if they don't do it now, it will cost a lot more to, to do it later on. What I was told on the phone.
I can stick on that.
Um, it's change order for the Church Street project.
Yeah.
We're going to up the service from a two hundred amp to a four hundred amp service and we're going to install six new additional RV pedestrians, and we have ten.
Here in your.
So, it's just a change. You have an question, sixty thousand is what?
Uh, it's.
Oh, yeah, here it is.
Fifty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-five.
But the money's already there, correct?
Yes. All right, so that's my motion. But first, we have to prove the claims. Would that, that be a separate motion, we have to accept the claims first. Then we'll be able to motion a comment, we'll change the.
I guess I got one question, right? The ice skating rink, we pay for the hotel for the employee to stay?
Know which one?
I don't know.
I think that was the one that was reimbursed. Now, that's the one, it was, they grabbed the wrong card. So, they, it was taken off, it was reimb, I mean, it's been reimbursed to us. But we had to, it was on their Visa, so we had to pay the Visa, but it has been reimbursed to us, the city, along with tax that we had to.
Have a motion to accept the claims? I'll make that motion. You want to second it?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So then we need a motion to, uh, accept the change order for the green space area?
What's the benefit of going to, what'd you say, a four hundred amp box? What are we going to get out of that?
Well, trying to put all that load on one two hundred amp service would exceed that capacity, so.
What are we talking about running?
Going from a two hundred amp to a four hundred amp?
No, but I mean, what type of, of stuff are we talking about running? Type of equipment?
Uh, just, uh, RV type equipment for vendors and whatnot. Fifty, fifty to hundred amp per pedestal. Right now, we've got four along Church Street. Going to add six more.
So, I should take care of anything we do down there. And the money's theirs.
It just makes sense to do it now versus getting the project done and then coming back in and having to tear everything back up and.
I'll make the motion to accept the change order.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
No business, uh, we already acted on the change order. Countryport five, pay application number five. Lori, I guess you're going to?
Yeah, Michelle won't be here. Um, it's in your packet there. It's just the next pay application. Michelle usually comes, it is coming out as part of the ready grant. This portion is going to be coming out, and it's already in there, it's already set up for that. It's just, we need your approval to pay it.
This is not on the agenda that I've had complaints about the heavy equipment trucks going up to the new addition up in country ports, carrying the roads up. Do we have a limit, weight limit on that, Bo?
There was nothing said. I was up there yesterday evening and took a drive-through there. I didn't see any, there is a little, I think the weather probably has more of an impact there in the middle at one spot, but I didn't see any road damage from the equipment other than dirt, you know, running in and out of there.
Of the Byron Street?
Yes, that's one of them.
I think it's been settled for a while, and I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's on top of the sewer lateral. It's just, there were others in years past that had settled like that and they had to be excavated, gravel compacted back in place, repaired. They were more on the main line, but I'm, if I'm not mistaken, that one, that one right there appears to be on the sewer lateral.
Bo, you're in the same position whenever all this started with that addition. Developers, are they bonded to repair the streets after they're done?
That's a good question. I, I don't know.
And I'm not blaming you for any of this, but how come the knee grass, and the knee grass was never put out on two thirty-one with the state? Me, that's one, you know, one of the things to do at the beginning.
Well, and that has to do a study.
Well, that should have been done in the prestates planning of the whole project, my point.
I know there was a lot of discussion about William Street widening a bit, but it didn't materialize. There was more concentration on the development itself.
So, there's no weight limits for our city streets and roads that run in and out of these housing divisions?
We have imposed weight limits due to weather and ground conditions in the past.
I was brought my attention, the county, it's got a weight limit on the roads.
Yeah, they just didn't.
Yeah, they just changed that.
Yes, sir.
We may want to look into that, I mean, I.
Yeah. I'm aware of the county, and that's usually what we follow.
Yeah.
They impose one.
Yeah, I mean, right now, it's probably not that big a deal because I don't think they're hauling that heavy of equipment up through there. Let them start. Yeah, a lot of traffic.
If we impose it.
Weight will come.
There, it's got to be specific for this project, but if we impose something citywide, it will be very similar to what the county would, has done. You say they imposed one?
Yes.
Couple weeks ago.
Couple weeks ago.
So, is that an action item from Old Works or from the council, or just do it?
Actually, impose a wetment?
Yes.
I believe it has come through the council.
It's going to have to be through a ordinance to set a weight limit on the city streets.
It is, have to be done through a ordinance.
Well, I think there would be more things to think about, how many businesses? Well, I think there would be more things to think about. How many businesses would be affected if they couldn't get their goods in if we put a weight limit on them?
I believe there's probably some exceptions to the rule.
I G A, we were thinking dollar jail, we'd probably have to somehow either, uh, like, you know, like Bo said, right, um, kind of tweak that a little bit.
Make it specific to residential areas.
Yeah, um.
You make it specific to streets.
Streets, yes, yes. Um, the, the hardest part in, in, in the way I'm looking at it is, how do we enforce that, right? Um, in terms of on our side, uh, weighing, excuse me, my allergies kill me today. How do we weigh these certain, you know, we could get state down here, you know, Dave Walkenbush and things like that to, uh, perhaps assist us. Uh, I know that's not their, their valley wick, obviously, but I think they would come down and assist us with that endeavor, but, uh, I, I don't know how, at this time, I'd have to think about how we would actually enforce that in terms of the weight, right? Is it ten thousand pounds? Does this truck weigh or does it weigh eleven thousand, right?
You don't have a weight station.
No, sir. You're right, you're right. Um, you know, yes, uh, the, the, their, um, their shipping documents should have the weight on there, but, you know, how, how accurate, how long has it been since they did do a weight station? So we could look at the paperwork, certainly, but whether that reflects, um, the actual weight or not is two different things, so.
I don't want any businesses impacted by putting a broad weight limit on the streets.
Okay, that's something we'll have to discuss further. Okay, next up, we have a update from Sullivan Development on the housing closed apartment, uh, project. We didn't vote for this?
Didn't vote. We needed a motion on the pay application.
Who wants to make a motion, uh, in country court five? Okay, Carol's, you have a motion?
I'll second.
What seconds on favor?
Aye.
Now we have a housing issue. Travis Venzel and Joe White from Sullivan Development will give us an update. No action items tonight, but they want to give us an updated work, things are, and some time for things, some time for things. So, yours?
Yeah, uh, Mike and members of the council here and the city of Logodee, thank you for having us. To reiterate Mike's point, there's no action items tonight. We just wanted to come before you to give you an update on where we are and where we've been since the last time we came before you all and, um, I'll say, I'll maybe speak for Travis and I by saying that really happy with the progress that's being made, um, since we were, um, approved to do this project, uh, by the state and, uh, have been continuing to work with our partners down here from the Martin County Alliance to the city, et cetera, to just continue working through our plans. Travis and I have been spending the majority of our time to date on this, uh, development, which again will be fifty units of apartments over at five oh seven North Oak Street, as well as a daycare center and some outdoor amenities, public park, pickleball courts, and some outdoor areas that we're planning for this, uh, just as a reminder. Um, but we've been spending the majority of our time over the last couple of months with our architect and starting to really pencil out the design and the layout for the project, as well as, um, finalizing or working through the financing for the project so that, uh, we can potentially, our projection is to close on the financing in May and start construction in June. That's kind of our projection right now. Between now and then, we're gonna have a lot of approvals and agreements and things that we'll need to run through, uh, the council here. Um, so you all are still completely in the driver's seat as it relates to this project. Um, all of the commitments that we've made, that we've talked about over the last several months are still in full force, still in full effect in terms of how we're gonna manage the property, uh, the quality of this development, the finishes that we have planned. All of those things are still in full effect. Nothing has changed and nothing will change as it relates to that. We've been working really closely with the property management group that will again be on site on a daily basis, managing the asset, managing the property, the premises, and making sure that everything is clean and pristine, and obviously monitoring the activity within the units with the residents and those kinds of things, ensuring that the bar that we set for this, which will be formalized in agreements with you all, um, is adhered to and the standard of excellence is achieved that we expect on this project.
How much federal money's going into that? Do you expect any backfeed from the government to lay there? Looking at grants and stuff. Has your grant been approved, I guess?
Yes. Yep.
So that's up to that.
Everything has been approved. It's good to go. We've still got some things to work through, uh, locally here on, you know, ready dollars and those kinds of things, but, but with the, in terms of the equity that's coming into the project that's been approved and we're in good shape there. We don't anticipate and ex, or expect any, um, issue from the state. Sorry.
Elon.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, we'll watch out for Elon and rocket ships flying over top surveilling what we're doing here. Yeah, in, in terms of the design and everything, we're gonna be bringing all of that through you all. Um, uh, Justin and, 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 uh, the building commission, uh, will obviously have final approval. We've gotta go to the drainage board and we're figuring out, figuring out the details of who and how those approvals will happen. Uh, we've been talking to Bo about the site and the utilities on site. Again, really just wanna make sure we're getting well in advance ahead of all the approvals and things that are gonna be needed. Um, and make sure we're all on the same page before we get to an actual approval, um, uh, request from, from you all. So, uh, really pleased with the progress that we're making on this project and, uh, our council has been working with Steven, has been in correspondence with him about these agreements. We'll continue to, uh, work through Steven on that to make sure that everything is above board and aligns with, uh, your all's expectations for the. Travis, anything?
Um, no, that was a really good summary. I think, you know, look out for, um, a development agreement, a pilot agreement, a subdivision of the property to subdivide off the, uh, Humane Society and the rest of the property to replat it. Um, look for those things to be coming. We'll try to group them, but some of those are ordinances and take two hearings. Some of those are agreements that take one hearing. Some of those are subdivision that has its own process, so we won't be able to line everything up for one, one night, a set of votes, but they will all line up and we'll continue to keep you updated on where that process is. If you have questions during the time saying, where are you or what's going on, let us know. Um, you probably will see some activity on the site. Um, we've had a phase one done, but we need a phase two done, environmental assessment. We're gonna do some core drilling to see what the soils are like. Again, all of this is just part of our due diligence to make sure we design the project that, that we can build there as we promised, so. With that, we just appreciate your continued support and, uh, feel free to ask any questions anytime.
Hey, Mike, I have a question. They're, they're gonna do some drilling down there and I had a resident lives next door to the site. He grew up there. He moved away. His dad lived there until he died. He lives there now. He said, back in the seventies, there was a contractor down there, I guess owned the property at the time, and they took, quit stuff from crane, transformers, broke them down and all this PCB liquid was poured in the ground down there. He can actually tell you right where it happened at. He, I was hoping he'd be here at the meeting tonight, but that's a concern. If that's toxic waste down there, somebody needs to test all that and you might wanna get ahold of the resident. He could tell you where you need to be tested at.
So we'll pass that on to the company, that, uh, environmental out of Bloomington that's gonna do the, did the phase one. We'll be doing the phase two. We'll pass that on. Um, they may have ways of researching that on their own. They may ask for comment.
We've been talking with Dave. And Dave's aware of it. I guess he's passing on to.
I think they talked to you.
No, I, I just talked to him briefly before he went up there.
So we'll make sure that that connection's made and any inappropriate tests are done.
Thank you.
Any questions for you guys?
Again, thank you for your support.
Thank you for the update and, um, I'm sure we'll be in touch a lot over the next, uh, few months.
Thank you.
Any other essential business?
There's supposed to be a special meeting scheduled for February nineteenth for the opening of bids on the.
It's a week from Tuesday?
Yeah. Need to set a time. The majority of the contractors that were looking at the project, want to bid on it, request more time. It was advertised to be for tonight, but they were granted an extension. So we need to schedule a special meeting for the nineteenth and set a time for the meeting. The deadline for the bids for February nineteenth at three P M. In the clerk trailer's office.
Smitty, you got basketball characters usually. Six o'clock a good time?
Yes.
Was set for six o'clock for the nineteenth? Got to mention, we do have a board of works executive session Thursday at six to discuss personnel and then there'll be a open public meeting immediately after, so. The board of works members are here and Danny Clark is aware. Yes?
Hey, why wasn't the agenda put on the city website?
That was me. I just didn't get any mail to Cameron in time.
I know a lot of people asked about it and I, I kept checking it daily. Even wasn't posted out here until today. You know, it's supposed to be posted forty-eight hours prior to the meeting.
Agenda's not supposed to be posted forty-eight hours.
According to Indiana law, it is.
Agenda's not supposed to be posted to the day of the meeting. Meeting notices, unless they're regularly scheduled meetings, have to be forty-eight hours.
Code five fourteen, one point four, says it has to. Indiana code. Like I said, I'd like to put it back on Facebook like we had it before, you know, some people.
I think there was a link from the website to Facebook, correct, when he posted.
He should've, when he posted it today. When he posted, when Cameron posted, he puts it on Facebook, shows a link on Facebook that sends you to the website, but again, that was, I did not have, it sent to him until today.
You still gotta click the link to get the agenda.
Yeah, once you're on Facebook, you're on Facebook, you just click it, go to the Facebook and meet our website. We are working on our website to try and get more records on there and for Cameron to organize it better, because even if you know something's wrong, there's sometimes it's real hard to find the thing you're looking for. Um, so we've been talking about that. We actually talked, chatted about it today, but again. So my goal is to get minutes always on there, ordinances past and present, but it's just gonna be a process of getting that on there.
Do we not have our ordinance on the website, our city ordinance? Did I look? I couldn't find it.
Only ordinances I can see that are on there are the ones that were done last year and most of them are underneath. I can't remember if they're under documents on the mayor page or under the documents on the council page, but like I said, it's kind of hard to find. Cameron and I discussed it today. We're all, it's, it's hard to, I mean.
Can't, can't find them on the internet. I found them one time, a couple of years ago, but.
Yeah, you can't. I mean, I would like for all that to be on me. It's, I would like for it to be there, so we're, we're working on it today. He's trying to come up with some ideas of how to make it simpler to find what it is you need to find.
Use more user friendly, which it should be. Websites are a big indicator of your community and if people outside the community wanna search your community, the website should be able to find.
And that's part of the reason why we're pushing everything from Facebook to the website too. Everything has a link on Facebook that goes to. We just want more traffic to be on the website, is what we want. We're trying to make it as easy as possible, even though it's, I mean, right now it's not, but it's a process of getting there.
So we'll have a six P M. February nineteenth meeting on the community crossings, um, right? And then board of works will be first, you know, so. There's no other essential business. I ask for a motion.
Brief update, the Humane Society seems to have something going and seems to be doing very well. They've got adoptions and animals have been taken there, so those people that have gotten on board have done a great job and just encourage everyone who can to, to support the Humane Society so we keep this going.
Thank you, Smitty. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thanks, everybody.